All right, good evening, everybody. We're gonna start the Pembroke Zoning Board of Appeals meeting October twentieth at seven P. M. My name's Frederick Castan. I'm the chairman. I'll let the other members introduce themselves.
Hi, Chris McGrill, Vice Chair.
All right. So I gotta make one item first. Yes. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording, which will be used to ensure an accurate record of proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in open session will be recorded. PAC TV is providing the service live on Comcast backslash Xfinity Government Access Channel Nine. Those without cable, visit YouTube for live streaming. All right, so we will start with our first hearing. So we have public hearing, case number seven twenty-five, variance, Lee Graham, one fifty-three Chapel Street. Notice is hereby given that Pembroke Zoning Board of Appeals hold public hearing on Monday, October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven P. M., Pembroke Town Hall, room six, on the application of Lee Graham, one fifty-three Chapel Street, Pembroke, Mass., requesting a variance in accordance with the zoning bylaws, Town of Pembroke, Section four, one D. Three, side yard setback to construct a two-door garage twenty-six by twenty-four feet, with an attached mudroom twenty-two by nine feet. The garage will also include a bedroom on the second level. Mudroom will connect the proposed garage to the existing house. Side yard setback replacement will be eight feet. Twenty-foot setback is required for the side yard. Property is located at one fifty-three Chapel Street, Pembroke, in Residential District A. Assessors map F three lot fifty-seven. All right, who's there for that? You just gotta come up. Anyone speaking, just you gotta speak into the microphone, just for the, it's not to project the sound here, but just for the TV.
Sure.
Okay, so I want you to just introduce yourself and let us know what you're, what can I do?
My name is Leah Graham. My husband and I, Dana Rosner, he's working right now, so I wish he could be here. But we both grew up in Pembroke. I grew up in Ladies Slipper, he grew up in Misty Meadow. So when we were looking to buy our first home, we found this little one on Chapel Street, knew it needed a lot of work, and it was pretty small. So we are expecting our third child and just like need more space, but we wanna be able to stay in Pembroke. Both of our, all of our parents still live in Pembroke, and we wanna be in Pembroke, so we, we're trying to find a way to put an addition on here to hopefully make this work.
Okay. Okay. Chris, you have any questions with the application?
Two seconds. I had the wrong set of prints, print's open.
And David, do you have anything?
I, I have one, one question. On, we've only got like a front elevation of the proposal. Are there windows down the side on the bed, on the bedroom, overlooking the side of the property?
Yeah.
So you've got windows at the front, windows down the side?
Yeah.
And windows at the back?
Sure, yeah.
Any neighbors, yea or nay?
I haven't heard from anyone.
No?
We spoke with all the neighbors, and nobody said, everyone said like, that was great, and no one said they wanted to be here, so.
It's not a bad thing that nobody's here.
Yeah. We had talked to the women, like that's directly, directly next door. I said, oh, I'm so excited, your little press day. I thought, okay.
Good.
I don't really have anything. I mean, I just, I understand your, I don't, I feel for your, for your predicament. I don't understand it, because I'm not living in it. I'm trying to work on that whole, you don't understand, you're not living in my house. But yes, no, I, I feel for your predicament.
The only issue I have is just, there's a standard for a variance.
Sure.
And really, there's nothing in front of us, I think, that sort of establishes that you've met that standard.
Which would be?
It's under chapter forty-eight, section ten, and in the bylaws, so, I mean, I think what you need to do is, you know, make that presentation. I'm not gonna hold you to it right now, so it might be something we gotta continue.
Okay.
To, you know, put something on the record of why you're entitled to a variance. I understand your situation, but there is a high standard for a variance, and you're asking, you know, for, I think it's a twenty-foot setback, and you're gonna be eight feet off the line. So I think what you need to do is, you know, put something together, preferably in writing, you know, establishing why you think you're entitled to the variance. Because for, it's hard for us to just grant the variance without you at least articulating why you'd be entitled to it by the standard in the chapter forty-eight and in our bylaws.
Okay.
So my suggestion, and I can't speak for the board, but I think until you present something like that, preferably, you know, some people do it by way of a memo, or, you know, some writing, articulating how you would fit into that standard and qualify, or at least give us something to hang our hat on.
Okay.
To give you that variance. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So it's within our bylaws, if you go into the bylaws and look up the variance, it'll lay out what the standard is.
All right.
It's also in chapter forty-eight, section ten, House General Laws, that'll lay it out as well. And there's certain requirements you gotta try to meet in order for us to grant the variance. So that'd be my suggestion at this point. I don't know if you guys just agree, I just don't see anything in the file establishing that. And I know you probably, most people don't know what it is, so I, I'm not criticizing, it's just, in order for us to really consider it, and I think, give you that variance, we gotta have something articulated in here explaining how you qualify for that.
Sure.
I'm not for or against the project one way or the other, but I think we just need that from you. You know, whether it comes from you and your husband, or some people have an engineer who's doing their design to do, help them with it, or an attorney or something, but, and some people just do it on their own, which is fine.
Okay.
So that's, 'cause for what's before me, I don't think there's anything here that would give you the right to a variance from what you presented. It's just a plan which looks nice, but you're seeking a lot of relief, and really haven't described how you'd be entitled to it. Chris, you have any other thoughts, or?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree.
David, do you have any?
Nothing to add to that.
So it's up to you, if you'd like, I mean, I'd be comfortable if Chris and David are, we could just do a short continuance to the next hearing, which is November seventeenth. You could submit something between now and then, preferably, you know, a few days before the hearing at least.
Sure, sure, yes.
Just so we can digest it.
Okay.
And then we can, you can always put something in front of us that we can, if we're gonna, assuming you can meet the standard, we can, you know, rely on that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Is anyone here for this hearing, for or against? No? Okay. So no one's here, either for or against?
I would be for it.
My father.
Okay, her file, for the record, her father's for it.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't, why don't we do that? I think that'll give you an opportunity to
Okay.
Take a look at that. So again, you can check the bylaws, and they're online, I believe, and Sue could, you know, should be directed to it.
Okay.
And chapter forty-eight, section ten.
Okay.
So take a look at that, and then we'll hold the file. You can come back then, and you can submit how you, send it to Sue.
Okay.
Just something in writing, and then we can just have you back quickly on November seventeenth. Okay, so I'll make a motion to continue case seven dash twenty-five of Lee Graham of one fifty-three Chapel Street to November seventeenth at seven P. M. And before I move on that motion, would you disagree to continue any deadlines for another thirty days? Because we have deadlines to issue a decision.
Sure.
So based on this extent, you know, us continuing it, we'll extend any deadline to another thirty days, let's say.
Yeah.
Is that, is that okay with you?
Okay.
Okay. All right, so back to the motion for the continuance. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we'll see you back here on the seventeenth.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I don't know if he's gonna come back down with that red lights on that mic that he's put there.
Oh, we can use one of these fifteen we have up there.
All right. Okay, and let's have our next hearing. This is case eight dash twenty-five, variance, Riverside LLC, excuse me, Murphy Electric. Notice is hereby given that the Pembroke Zoning Board of Appeals hold a public hearing on Monday, October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, seven P. M., Pembroke Town Hall, room six, on the application of Riverside LLC dash Murphy Electric, Seven Riverside Street, Pembroke, Mass., zero two three five nine, requesting a variance in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the Town of Pembroke, Section five A. D. Five, side yard setback. To construct a detached one thousand four hundred forty square foot storage garage, then ten feet from the side yard setback in order to place it far enough away from the existing building to allow delivery trucks to safely pass between the existing building and proposed storage garage. Twenty-foot setback is required for the side yard. Property is located at Seven Riverside Drive, Pembroke, Industrial District B. Assessors map F fifteen lot sixty-four. Okay, who's there for that?
Good evening, my name's Paul Louderbeck, Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors. I worked on the site plan.
Okay.
And the narrative, and this is Mark Pitts, representing Murphy Electrical.
Excellent.
Dan Murphy, the owner, is out of town, he's not able to be here.
Sure, understood.
So I'll just do a brief presentation of the project.
Yeah, go ahead.
So basically, it's Seven Riverside Drive, a commercially developed property located in Industrial District B. It's about eighty-five thousand square feet. The existing site is currently pre-existing non-conforming, and the non-conformances, the front setback, it's sixty feet, but it's fifty-two point two feet is the front setback there.
Okay.
The applicant is requesting a variance to construct this detached, little over fourteen hundred square foot storage garage, ten feet from the side property line, in order to place it far enough away from the existing building to allow delivery trucks. We created this truck, turning the plan that shows the delivery trucks. If the garage was placed within the twenty feet, this is the size of the garage, he needs to replace, there's a bunch of storage boxes back there that he uses to keep everything in.
Shipping containers.
Shipping containers, yeah. And some racks and storage, far enough away from the existing building to allow delivery trucks to safely pass between the existing buildings and proposed storage garage. We're making attorney movements required to back into the loading dock, please. See this plan, so the trucks come in, deliver here. In order to pull back out safely, the garage needs to be set back. So the applicant has provided the following information supportive of the above request for variance. There's a section that, owing to circumstances related to the circumstances in shape, so the key is the shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a little enforcement of provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, as otherwise the petitioner or appelleant. Subject property is an odd-shaped triangle or lot. You see, there's not really any back property lines, it's front and two sides. To place the proposed storage garage outside of the minimum side setback without substantially interfering with safe and efficient access by the delivery trucks. Currently, the applicant is using temporary storage containers and outdoor racks to store materials, and the proposed storage garage represents a substantial improvement over the current conditions in terms of aesthetics appearance, particularly safety. The existing storage container does not contain lighting, which can be dangerous to crew's handling heavy construction material leaving the site early. Turning late, the proposed garage will have electricity and lighting as required by the building code. On top of the delivery truck safely getting by the garage. And then desirable leave may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or the purpose of this bylaw. Let's do a brief explanation of how this will enhance or help the property as a whole. The area of the proposed storage garage is along the near lot line adjacent to the entrance. The drive of lows in this place will not cause substantial detriment to public good. So the entrance drives, the lows up here, there's a big tree buffer line there. Both properties are commercial and are surrounded by other commercial properties. The placement of the storage garage will not cause a visual blight to patrons and lows. The existing vegetated buffer will remain substantially unchanged. It's buffering here. Proposed variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent of the bylaw. It will not cause overcrowding of the land. It will not cause pollution of the environment. It will facilitate transportation, conserve the value of the commercial property, and is an appropriate use of the land, given the property is located in Industrial District. It will also represent a substantial improvement to the aesthetics of the property, and will provide additional stormwater. There's another, one other issue. There's a catch basin down here. It kinda gets overwhelmed during large storm events, right down here. And we're proposing a leeching catch ba, this leeching catch, it can become overwhelmed during large storm events. This new roof runoff will be cut, I mean, we're gonna go plant and board it, since that's passed, as a proposed under, I did soil testing out here on the lot, and propose an underground subsurface storage system, roof runoff, so we catch all the roof. Currently, this paved area is running down to this catch basin, it gets overwhelmed during large storm events, and maybe capturing the roof runoff and bringing it underground into an infiltration system. So on behalf of the applicant, we respectfully request the board review and grant the request of variance for the above reasons I mentioned.
All right, does the, where are the doors gonna be on the, on the storage unit?
Right, entrance would be on the front.
Yeah, yes.
Go on there, there might be a little side door on the side.
Okay. So like, like trucks loading things into there, is that the idea, or is it?
I think it'd be more, how, how you, the actual function of the garage.
If you can just, just come up to the mic, just, otherwise they can't hear you at home.
Yeah, for storage of some of our, our trucks, and also all of the items, you know, some of our materials, the stock, and everything would be stored in there as well.
Okay, so it's purely just storage?
Yes.
Like no offices or anything on there?
No.
No, okay. Okay.
You know, over the, when we purchased the property, we did a lot of improvements to the current building, so this would be the, basically the, the final step to kinda top everything off, and leave it to where, you know, it's pleasing to the eye, because before I came to work for Murphy Electric, I didn't even know the place was there because of all the trees and everything, so.
Now, was there some sort of, along that property line with a storage unit closest to, there's, I think you said there's some sort of vegetated buffer there?
Yeah, it's all, it's all heavily tree.
Okay.
This is a tree line, real estate tree line.
Okay.
This is the access road to the lows. All the employees park along here. This is kinda the employee park.
Yes.
So it's more for people who park, they can get down to the building, they'll be here, and so really, this is the only spot they can put it in, due to the fact of the large truck traffic, the requested variance.
What's the volume of truck traffic per day, per week?
Do you know the volume? How often you get these large trucks coming in?
Several times a day. I mean, we do a lot of work, and so most of everything, if it doesn't go to, directly to the job site, comes here.
And, and there's a, a one-way, are you telling us there's a one-way system around here?
Yeah, we put, we put signs, so they come in through this direction here, and then they would either leave that way, or, depending on the size of the, the truck, would come back out the other direction.
Right.
But we have a sign that directs them into this, this entrance, and out the other.
So the volume of trucks will be the same, it's just, you just need to kinda clean up the storage?
Oh, yes.
Essentially, okay.
There's a lot of those.
And on?
Storage containers.
On that's, at the side with the, where you're gonna put the unit, your proposed unit, that's just that access road to Lowe's. How far away is that from the, like, the property line? Roughly?
Say fifty feet, maybe?
Oh, okay.
That's, that's forty feet right there.
Right.
Twenty, twenty, so about forty, forty feet later.
Forty feet to the back.
From the property line, it's about thirty-five, and the actual back of this is about forty feet.
Okay. And that's just all wooded?
Yeah, it's heavily wooded, tall trees.
And that's all Lowe's property, or whoever owns the?
Yeah, this.
That's the way Lowe's is?
Yep.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it's the entity that owns Lowe's.
Right, okay. So that's the entrance, like, right off of, where the big light is across some coals and mesorillas and all that?
Yeah, you got your mobile gas station, your stop and shop.
Next to August West, in between August West and Lowe's, and like the back.
Yeah. Right, okay. Yeah, I'm trying, all right, that's right.
See, you don't even know it's there.
Yeah. My daughter, there's like a soccer thing in the back of Riverside now, there's some old buildings back there, and they converted it to like an indoor soccer facility or something, so, and going around.
They did?
Yeah. Okay. Sue, did anyone write in for or against this, or no?
No, I did not hear from anyone.
You guys obviously didn't hear from any of Butters, or?
No.
No, okay. Chris, you have any questions?
No, I know where the property is under Biden a million times, and I think it'll look better than what's there.
Yeah, we're trying.
I don't lose sleep over what's there, but I mean, it, the, taking the initiative to make it nicer is good.
The irregular shaped lot is what's, if you had more of a back property line, you'd probably go get this thing in, but since it comes to a triangular point in the back, it's.
Right, so you're relying on sort of the shape for your argument, okay. All right. David, do you have any other?
No, I was just trying to see if there's sort of alternative locations for it, but I don't think, I don't think there really are.
It doesn't seem to be, I mean, I assume you guys vetted that on, obviously, if you could've done it?
This is where all employees parks, they're trying to jam it in here, stick it out, and it would make it unsafe, you know, because this is where all the activity happens.
Right.
The work, and the loading and unloading, so you can't relocate the employee park into the back, so it's really, and this is kind of triangular. We bump out into the drive path, so that would be difficult to be placed.
So you basically just got truck, traffic back there?
Yeah.
No, no, no personal transport or anything?
Okay. Chris, anything else?
And then having the additional lighting for the guys in the morning, because our drivers are, are there at five o'clock in the morning, sometimes earlier.
Okay. Is where that, is what you're proposing, is that where those like storage units are now?
Yes.
Yeah, they're all.
It's kinda stacked in that, okay. So those will just be gone, and then you'll have this?
Yes. And then we have, on this side, you know, there's racks there too, with, and it's, it could look a lot better if we could get that out of there.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, employee safety and the irregular lot shape is kind of the key factor, so.
Will you be able to, can you see, will you see it from the road? The storage, I mean, easily?
There's a big set of bush, high bushes that are like six, seven feet here.
Right.
And then the building, you know, starts here, so.
You can have some pictures, maybe you can see where the storage containers are presently.
We've got some pictures of it.
Those are the ones I provided before, or did you take?
We got more some of the.
This is from the road.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
This, there's, there's your storage containers all lined up in the back.
From the other, from the other side view.
These containers are right all like here, so you're looking that way at these containers in that photo?
Yes, because there's the base end, that's the back, and then.
So it'll really take the place of the, of those?
Yes.
Storage containers, so it's better.
Right.
That's temporary solution, this is a permanent solution.
Yeah. Okay. Is that the build, the storage building kinda gonna look like the current building, similar?
Yes.
Okay, same kinda design? All right. I don't have anything else, I mean, I read the materials, they, you know, looked at, obviously, the bylaws of the variance, and went through it pretty thoroughly, so do you guys have any other questions?
I don't know.
Do you gentlemen have any others you wanna add, or, otherwise we can close and go to the boat?
No.
Okay.
I think he's covered it all.
Okay. All right, just make a motion to close the hearing, go into deliberation, get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. I mean, I looked at everything. I noticed with the variance standard, it's, it is an odd-shaped lot, and I looked at the lots around there, and they're all sort of different, they're not that lot, you know, obviously with the variance, if, you have to have a sort of a unique-looking lot. It's one of the, one of the pieces that, you know, coupled with it's in an industrial, commercial zone.
Right, there's no resident, residential buildings anywhere.
No, and not, next to it's just a driveway parking lot in the Lowe's, that's heavily wooded.
On three sides, uh, two sides?
Yeah.
So on three sides?
I don't see it, you know, being any way offensive, or, you know, taking away from the bylaw. Also, you know, from a hardship standpoint, they really don't have anything else to put it, and, you know, they're putting basically storage containers out there, and without it being there, there could be safety issues, and, so I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with it. The only thing I would say is we just, they've represented that it's gonna be storage only, just, there's no offices, just that we're.
that it's gonna be storage only, this, there's no offices, just that we're restricted to just storage only. Um, no, no offices in there, but it sounds like all they're trying to do anyways, so, um, okay. Um, do you guys have any other thoughts on?
No.
No?
No, I think so.
Yeah, I think they, they adequately, um, you know, met the standard for the variance, and based on the location, the shape, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. Um, and as we noted, no one was for or against it, uh, butterwise, and there's really no impact on any residential neighborhood.
Including Lowe's, who, who were the main, main butters there.
Right, yeah.
If they had an objection, I'm sure we'd know.
Right, okay. So, um, all right, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the application case 8-25 for the variance, um, for the side setback as requested by Riverside LLC. Um, just one condition, that it's storage only, no office space. Anything else? Any, uh, conditions?
No, I don't think so, I mean, just the storage thing, I mean, I don't know if they can have a bathroom in there, whatever, but I mean, that's, I don't care about that.
No, again, snow offices, storage only, does that work for you, David?
That's fine.
Okay. Uh, can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You as well.
Uh, and then, we have a set of minutes in front of those gentlemen, uh, so, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, meeting minutes from Monday, August 18, 2025. Get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then I will make, uh, another motion to approve the meeting minutes from Tuesday, August 26, 2025. Get a second?
Second.
All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I think that concludes our meeting, so, um, we close the meeting, meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.